Good evening, everyone. I'll call our Personnel and Appointments Committee meeting to order at 5:35 PM on this Tuesday, August 16. All members are present, consisting of myself, Chair Andre Bumgardner, Counselor David McBride, and Counselor Scott Westervelt. Calendar and Communications, do you have any Communication Council member?
Nothing here, thank you.
Any Communication Council Westervelt?
Um, I've just received, I recently received, found out, are we not going to allow um, any uh, public input tonight?
Uh, so I, I did, in addition to receiving communication, just as you did Counselor Westervelt, um, I have received a plethora of communications regarding uh, certain appointments uh, or proposed uh, or applications before us. Um, in our committee, we've never held a public comment period, uh, but with that said, um, I do feel like as we are obligated to share communications as well, or at least summarize the communications we got with respect to appointment. Um, I would highly implore all those who uh, who wanted to speak um, at our committee. And um, just for folks know, this is not um, my personal stance, I, I fundamentally do believe in the ability for a public comment. Uh, it is just not a standing item for this committee, um, as um, you know, appointments are, are sent to uh, the regular council meeting um, on the first Tuesday of every month, um, on the consent calendar. And that is really your opportunity to speak on any appointment or uh, lack thereof, um, you know, for uh, the council. And I say the, the lack thereof in large part because in the past, and even the more recent past, there have been times where our committee has unanimously put forward candidates, and the council has moved in an, in an opposite direction. And so, um, that would, with uh, in that uh, in that example, um, you know, folks who maybe would have wanted to speak on uh, in support of a candidate or an applicant, or speak in opposition of an applicant, may not have been able to do so because of uh, the unexpected um, you know, uh, a- action by the council of, you know, of going in a different direction than the, the uh, committee, so to speak. So, um, I do see Clerk McCauser's hand raised.
Yes, I'll just chime in, uh, uh Chairman and Committee members. The uh, you all know that the, the all subcommittees of the Town Council are strictly for uh, recommendations to the council, just like the committee as a whole has no power to actually pass legislation or make appointments. It's all recommendation to the Town Council, so therefore, there's no room for a, a pit, you know, public comment if, really, because there's no action that can be taken, it's only recommendation. So, that's why the history is, has been set. And of course, everyone likes freedom of speech. And like you said, everybody should write letters and come to the council meeting.
Absolutely.
I concur. So, as you've said, um, I apologize, as you said, um, we've received a ton of emails in, in multiple directions on tonight's meeting. Um, so, um, with that, uh, since we're gonna give everybody the same uh, opportunity to email in comments and questions and stuff like that, I think we should go with that. Um, and I'll just share my comments as we go. Thank you.
Yes, and um, one last point on that item. Clerk McCauser, I also received a countless communications, especially within the last day uh, regarding appointments. So what is, would be the appropriate way to send that over? Because they were addressed to the entire committee, so I just wanted to submit them in the record that way. You know, your offices and receipt of them.
Uh, that was a little, the question was mirrored with lots of dialogue, so what is the actual thing that you need to know?
Do you like me to send over a communication to the committee that was uh, addressed just to, to, to me? Do I just forward that over to you?
Uh, absolutely, I could include it um, in the uh, archive for this meeting. I don't have, I don't handle the minutes and so forth of your ma- meeting, but once they're set up in the archive, I can add anything you'd like to it.
Excellent. I'll advance those, those emails to your office by this evening, that way you have them and receive tomorrow. Um, and I think, other than that, um, we'll include those communications just in the record uh, sent by community members regarding uh, applications for various boards and commissions. Uh, and I have nothing other to report. All right, uh, with that said, um, I will make a motion to approve the May 31st Town Clerk Personnel Appointment.
Second, Westervelt.
All right, moved by Bumgardner, seconded by Westervelt, any discussion?
Yeah, I just have a quick, quick uh, question, Chair. In the minutes, it states that uh, we, or you, I'm not sure who was going to recommend to the the Town Council, um, that we didn't take an action, and that we're gonna propose to the Town Council, expand the number of the Town Councilors serving as, as ex officio. Did we do that, or is that something you handled? I just wanna make sure we completed what we said we were going to do.
Yes, I've, I've had that conversation already with our mayor, and it is his sole discretion to um, you know, put, place that on the agenda.
Great, thank you.
I indicated that obviously was supported unanimously by our council, so I would hope we, we can get that done in a, in a quick time frame.
Thanks.
No problem. Uh, seeing no other discussion, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Oppose, extension, a motion moves unanimously 3000. Um, just for the purposes of time, we'll, we'll re... Hey, uh, Clerk McCauser, do we have anybody in for purposes of interview?
Oh yes, you do, you have quite a few people. You have um, um, Joe Green and uh, Conrad Heed and Bruce McDermott, um, Michael Freeman, those are in attendance right now.
Okay.
So.
Okay. All right, um, I'll do, we'll, we'll do a little switcher real quick, so, um, we'll do, we'll do two appointments real quick. Make a motion to approve David Williams of 129 Elm Street.
Those are, those are reappointments, correct?
Yes, reappointment.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, I'll make a motion uh, to reappoint David Williams of 129 Elm Street, knowing to the Water Pollution Control Authority, the term expires, expires 5/24/25.
Second that, McBride.
All right, moved by Bumgardner, seconded by McBride, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Oppose, extension, motion carries unanimously 3000. Uh, next, I'll make a motion to reappoint Laura Baller of 30 Brook Street uh, to the Water Pollution Control Authority, the term expires 5/24/25.
Second, Westervelt.
Moved by Bumgardner, seconded by Westervelt, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Oppose, extension, motion carries unanimously 3000. All right, uh, so with that said, I'll call, we'll um, bring in our first interviewee. Um, I see that we have Mr. Green in the house, so why don't we start with the Housing Authority? Excellent, uh, Mr. Green, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Yes, uh, Mr. Green, welcome to the Personnel and Appointments Committee. And thank you for your interest in serving on one of our, uh, boards of commission, in particular, our, our Housing Authority. Uh, I, along with Counselor Westervelt and McBride, will ask just a few questions regarding uh, why you're interested in service and um, your relevant uh, interest in, you know, serving and experiences that would inform your service on this commission or this uh, authority. Um, so, uh, Mr. Green, uh, what interested you in applying to serve on the Grotton Housing Authority?
Uh, I know a couple of the residents there, and one of them asked me to apply for the position.
Excellent. Excellent. And uh, just reading through your application, uh, what you know about this board, uh, addresses housing concerns at Pequot Village in Grotton Garden, under the authority of the Town Council. And have you uh, visited or, or uh, frequented any of those halls?
Yes.
Okay, and um, if, and I, I certainly would, don't want to put words in your mouth, but uh, do you have any uh, ideas or uh, you know, any particular item or issue you'd like to work on as a member of the Grotton Housing Authority?
No, I don't have enough uh, familiarization with all the intricacies, all the, you know, issues that uh, uh, may or may not be present. Uh, I know there's a, a new building there, which is pretty impressive. Um, and uh, just like to see that well, uh, you know, integrated in the community that's, that's pre-existent.
And, and what do you think the Housing Authority's role is in um, preserving and enhancing our affordable housing stock in Grotton?
I'm, uh, I don't really get the question, I'm sorry. I mean,
Yes.
It's self-explanatory, I mean, I mean, you know, the, it's a housing, there's a, a commission, and um, and you've got uh, uh, it's, it's, it's laid out in the um, in the, in the uh, Town Council by the Town Council.
Yes, yes, uh, and, but it, it, just in terms of the Housing Authority's role, uh, what, what do you think the Housing Authority's role is in enhancing, uh, you know, or, or expanding the uh, just affordable housing stocks here in our entire, our entire town?
Well, to continue its mission, to provide affordable housing for um, those who meet eligibility. Um, and to maintain the standards of, of uh, health and cleanliness, et cetera, and, and uh, ensure the well-being of the residents, and that they're, you know, listened to, and uh, just the, the, the essentials, you know, the basics up there.
Fantastic. Uh, I have no further questions, do uh, other members have questions for Mr. Green?
Uh, this is Counselor McBride, I just have one question, if you can give an example of any of the boards or committees you've served on, you mentioned it, I just wanted to, just a quick 30 seconds on what boards and committees you have served on?
Um, I'm, uh, with the, uh, my church committee, um, Paquonic Bridge Baptist Church, and also with the Dentists in Homestead, I've been on uh, both of those boards. I'm currently on the uh, uh, deacon over at Paquonic Bridge Baptist Church. Thank you.
Um, I'll just uh, make a comment, and um, I see that you're a Sergeant First Class in the Army. Um, thank you very much for your service, that's always appreciated. I also recognize that you're a respiratory therapist, so um, you're well-equipped to, to ha- handle assessments for personnel um, or for persons that may be affected while you're there. Um, I, I guess that's really all I have for now, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. All right, I, I don't have any further questions, Mr. Green. But uh, you know, I understand you submitted your application back in February, and um, there were several applications already in the queue. We opted um, to um, appoint a, another member, uh, and nothing certainly against you, but obviously, you know, an issue of um, that many boards or commissions face, you know, or that you, you have to meet a certain criteria, especially with respect to minority representation. And as a committee, especially a bipartisan committee consisting of uh, you know, we've got a Republican and obviously, you know, two Democrats, but um, you know, we are, are certainly not all of the like-minded, but we, we do work well, and we try to, uh, we, we make it an effort to appoint folks of, of uh, different political persuasions and of uh, political, you know, parties in our committee. So, um, so I, I just hope, you know, you, in, in not being appointed at, at that time when you submitted, it had nothing to do with you personally, uh, and, and certainly are qualified, and I, I think you'd be a great member of this Housing Authority. So, um, thank you, Mr. Green, I, I think that, that's it for, for our interview, unless the counselors have any other questions.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, Clerk McCauser, do we have any more uh, folks for the Housing Authority for our interview today?
I don't see anyone, uh, we were expecting Dane um, Stevenson, but he probably i- isn't in town right now, I don't, I, usually he's very responsive to emails, so I was, so he did get the same email request, so, and it was sent today, which I apologize, I needed clear um, direction, not to invite every single person, because that's, uh, okay, you know, unless the committee wants that. And I hadn't, I only heard from one person from that.
Yeah, all right. All right, uh, if, if there is no other uh, folks here for interview, um, I will entertain a motion to appoint Joseph Green to the to the Grotton Housing Authority.
McBride will second that.
Are you making the motion, or I, I didn't make the motion?
All right, I'm sorry, three minutes, I will make the motion to recommend Joseph Green.
I'll second Westervelt.
All right, uh, so that was moved by McBride, seconded by Westervelt, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor, indicate by, uh, all those in favor of appointing Joseph Green to the Grotton Housing Authority with the term expiring 7/31/25. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Oppose, extension, motion carries unanimously 3000. Uh, congratulations, Mr. Green, on uh, your recommended uh, appointment to the Grotton Housing Authority.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, have a good rest of your evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Clerk McCauser, who do we have next in the queue for interviews?
Okay, so I just, I'm a little lower in my hand, I was just going to tell you, um, just make a suggestion, when, once you've made an appointment, to explain the next step is the Town Council appointment, and then they'll receive a letter of appointment by my, by my office, and that they must come in to receive an oath of office, uh, before they can vote in that committee.
Right.
Okay, so the next, the next uh, group you have uh, is for planning, I guess it's for planning and zoning, I only, I don't see, um, yep, so you have planning and zoning applicants, uh, McDermott and Heed. And you also have a, a recommendation from Chairman Pritchard regarding this vacancy. There are two vacancies, a full member and an alternate member.
Excellent. Um, Clerk McCauser, would you like to read that recommendation into the record?
Hey. Hey, um, it was received in the Town Clerk's office on August 12th. Uh, it was written by Jeffrey Pritchard, who is the Chairman of Planning and Zoning Commission for the Town of Grotton, and he's naming uh, alternate member Stephen Hudichak. And he, he states, uh, Stephen has an extensive knowledge of the zoning regulations, and was an active member of the zoning commission, which included participation in preparation of the current town of Grotton uh, zoning regulations. And so he would like, uh, his recommendation is to move Stephen from the alternate position to the new vacant uh, full member position, that just came, came up last week. So that's, that's protocol, when a, when a vacancy occurs, uh, a, a full member vacancy occurs, I immediately, our office immediately notifies the Chairman of that commission, or board, or agency. So they have an opportunity to consider recommend, recommending an alternate member to fill the vacancy. It isn't always that you have a member, an alternate member that has uh, the, the knowledge to serve on the full, full board, you know, somebody who's only been there for two minutes, you know, you might as well appoint a, a, a new person. So, this is a, this is a valid and important recommendation.
A- absolutely, I couldn't agree more. Um, and I also was in receipt of that correspondence, um, and we've had um, uh, plenty of time to review, and I, I certainly don't wanna speak for fellow counselors, but I think we've all indicated, and I've received, just conversations, what's relevant, uh, written communication with Counselor McBride, that we've reviewed the applications um, uh, entirely, and, and, uh, and so, appreciate the information. Uh, Counselor, I'm sorry, uh, the authority is with their, uh, Clerk McCauser. Um, and with that, I feel most comfortable uh, appointing uh, Mr. Hudichak to fill the vacancy created by Barbara Tarbox to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh, Mr. Hudichak, uh, in the several meetings that I reviewed or have watched over, uh, you know, my time in, in a local, local government, um, and certainly as of late, um, he, despite being an alternate, has demonstrated that uh, he is more than capable of serving as a voting member as, as uh, uh, Clerk McCauser indicated, his prior service uh, as a full uh, voting member uh, of, to the zoning commission here in Grotton, um, predating um, by uh, date of birth. And uh, has obviously shown a, a great willingness to work with uh, all committee members uh, respective of, of party affiliation, um, and has never, um, never been one to uh, allow politics or uh, you know, uh, any, any other issue, a personal issue interfering with his duty as being a fair arbiter of land use uh, decisions and planning for our community. So, I feel most comfortable uh, uh, recommending the appointment of Mr. Hudichak uh, to fill this uh, the full-time, full uh, voting member position. Um, and I, does, do other counselors have any uh, comments on that?
No, I believe you've covered it quite well. I think he's an excellent candidate for this.
Excellent.
Yeah, this is Counselor McBride, I would agree with your comments as well, I just, I wanna make it clear for the record that, you know, I have on my records, he was an alternate back in 1992, and he was a full member in 1994, and therefore, you know, the experience, as we know, is significant, especially in that, that important committee. So, I, I do uh, respect Conrad Heed and his admiration and to move forward, and he started to get some experience on the planning zoning, and he's obviously has some workhouse experience, uh, would love to have him move up as well, but I really do believe uh, this recommendation and the strength of the experience carries its weight. I, I would be supportive of that as well.
Excellent. Uh, so with that said, I will make a point, a motion to appoint Stephen Hudichak of 33 Leeward Avenue, the term expiring 12/31/2026, uh, to the Planning and Zoning Commission as a full-time member, so move.
Second, Westervelt.
All right, uh, moved by Bumgardner, seconded by Westervelt. Um, bear with me, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor of appointing Mr. Hudichak to the Planning and Zoning Commission as a full-time member, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, extension, motion carries unanimously 3000. Uh, congratulations, Mr. Hudichak on your recommended appointment as a full-time uh, member. Uh, all right, now that, that was out of the way, I think we can move on to interviews.
So you do have, um, I have, uh, if, if your plans go, you'll have two vacancies, uh, alternate vacancies on the Planning and Zoning Commission. So, and you do have to have two applicants in-house waiting to be interviewed, that would be Bruce McDermott and Conrad Heed.
Excellent. All right, I have no preference as far as who, who we bring in for our interview first.
Uh, since I had Mr. McDermott's uh, application long before Conrad's, uh, putting him up first.
Excellent. All right, Mr. McDermott, how are we doing today? Uh, Mr. McDermott?
Uh, Bruce, you're, you're unmuted, you can go ahead and talk. Hmm, hmm, maybe he stepped away, I don't think so. Well, here's another option, I can, I'm afraid of, I'm afraid to promote him to an attendee, because it just doesn't work well, you know, I'll just leave him where he is. Well, okay, then we'll go on to uh, Conrad, let's see.
All right.
All right, we have to come back to uh,
Excellent.
Mr. McDermott.
Hello, everybody.
Hi, Mr. Heed, how are you?
Very good, very good. Who knew I would be back at this meeting, but on the other side of the table?
But how quickly the table turned.
Yes.
But uh, excellent, all right, so uh, thank you, Mr. Heed, for joining us this evening. Um, I understand that you have shown, uh, or expressed an interest in uh, serving as a uh, uh, alternate, um, or a member to the Planning and Zoning Commission, um, here in the Town of Grotton. Uh, could you share some of the reasons, what informed you, or, or inspired you to uh, submit an application to the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, to serve on the Planning and Commission?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I think it's one of the more important committees uh, that we have in the town. Um, you know, as, you know, we, we'd like to get the right development and the right space around town, and, and you just wanna make sure that you're, you're listening to people, but also uh, reviewing the applications and working, um, now, to make sure that the town moves in, in the right direction as a whole, but also neighborhood by neighborhood. Uh, so I guess uh, I'll, I'll cite a few different articles that I've read recently, uh, not by name or title, because I don't, I'm not that specific, but um, you know, I read an article a few weeks back, I think it was either in the Hartford Current or the Connecticut Mirror, where planning and zoning is really kind of uh, your first line of defense in climate change. Uh, so while we're tasked with reviewing land proposals, we also need to be cognizant that um, we need to protect our town from, from uh, you know, bad developments that contribute to stormwater runoff, uh, tree, uh, what is it, where trees get stripped completely off of, of properties. Um, buildings may not be entirely uh, efficient, uh, so you know, we, we have, I wanna be in a position where I can challenge developers to really put their best forward, best foot forward. Uh, but at the same time, um, we're also facing a severe shortage in apartment buildings, uh, not only here in Grotton, but across the, the US, uh, that's in today's USA today, uh, is a footnote. But rents are just skyrocketing, uh, and we have plenty of places around town, um, maybe closer to like Route 12, where you wanna make sure that you have, um, people in place that are gonna, uh, not people in place, but, but you get developers in that wanna develop the right kinds of things that we need in our town. So I'd like to be a part of that. I mean, on the council, you know, obviously, I, I was a part of it, but it was a totally different position. So we would, at a 30,000 square, 30,000 foot level, review something, meet a, a few developers, pick something that looked good, and put it forward to the town to see if there was some interest, and then put it forward to Planning and Zoning, and then the Planning and Zoning picks it up, and they have a totally different role, right? So they, they really get down and dirty, um, and go through the details of, of a project, and they see, is it really good, or are there opportunities to improve it? Not to mention probably other things that I probably shouldn't mention, to make sure that I'm able to always vote on something in the future, right? Um, so I think it's an exciting role to be in, and I'm doing it um, as an alternate on the, the city side as well. Um, so I wanna be clear, I, I wanna be an alternate for the town, at least in the short term, because um, uh, I don't know the zoning regulations, um, but, you know, I, I obviously I can, I can learn it, so I'm, I'm looking forward to it. So, that's kind of, that's one way I would go, I'll try to keep this really short, uh, but like I said, I've, I've been a part of different I'll try to keep this really short, but like I said, I've, I've been a part of different efforts in the town to improve open space, to improve trails, to make sure that when things go in, we're considering things like parks. And I have a track record that you all can, can look back to, where I think you'll see that I'm fairly balanced. And yeah, that's it, so I'm just very interested in spending my time on Tuesday nights, which incidentally you may have noticed are free. So it fits right into my calendar.
All right, any questions, other questions from committee members?
This is Councilor Brian, I don't have any questions for, for Conrad, I'm aware of his capabilities and his experience, so no questions at this time.
Councilor Westerville?
Um, yes, Mr. Heath, how are you tonight?
Fantastic, thank you.
Good, I just, there's a lot going on and I know with the plan of conservation and development and with a lot of the things that have gone in, on, in the town in the last few years. Do you believe that you can bring an unbiased outlook as an alternate to the planning and zoning?
Yeah, I believe so. I think the most important thing to do is to approach something. You want to say with an open mind, but what does that really mean? You want to look at the facts and you want to challenge your own perceptions, because I'll be the first one to tell you that I'll walk into the room and I'll think one thing and after I learn a few things about it and get some input from other people, my way of thinking about things can change. And you have to be open to that. If you walk in the room, you've already made up your mind on something, no facts are going to get through and it's, it's I don't think you contribute as much as you could in a positive way, so yes, I, I think I could be an unbiased and positive support to the effort to the commission.
Okay, thank you very much for that. And I know, I know Groton has got a housing shortage and it's caused by a number of different things that are going on, I guess. I think we're in a position where we've got to decide how much development we want in different parts of the town, whether it be apartments, single-family housing, we also have short terminals, which is becoming a hot topic. And I'm just curious, can you give me, I don't, I don't think it's unfair to ask, but can you just give me an idea of what your thoughts are on STRs?
A totally fair question to ask, but I've been cautioned by Peter Roper, who used to be on Planning and Zoning, not to speak on specific things that may come before the, the committee, because then I'm prevented from voting on it, I would have to recuse myself. Yeah, I, I think it's really important, it's an important issue and it's one of the reasons why I'm interested in getting on this, because if and it's the same thing with apartments, investors come in the market and they crowd out private owners. And so I think you need to really understand something, you don't want to infringe on people's public or private property rights, but at the same time, you need to be looking out for the, I don't know if you want to call it the betterment, but for, for the town, for the local citizens, people who are here. So I think it's a fair question and I, if that isn't clear, without not being totally clear, I think go ahead and ask another question.
No, 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 that, that's fine and I appreciate your candor. Not wanting to put you actually on the spot and that's a good, good advice that you got, so I do appreciate that and I do appreciate your answer, thank you very much.
Welcome.
For me, right now, that's
Thank, thank you. I, I do have two follow-up questions, another Freudian slipper. Mr. Heath. Wanted to call you commissioner, fellow commissioner, but it's actually on the same wavelength. I understand you also serve on the City Planning and Zoning Commission as an alternate, as I did as of recently as a full-time member. And, you know, I was faced with the, you know, decision of serving on two bodies within a town government, obviously the city is a subdivision of the town. But faced with the, you know, the question or the dilemma, you know, where, where, you know, what happens in the case you will be voting on, on an item that needs pumping for you in both capacities as a town counselor or, or, you know, as a, a city planning and zoning commissioner. And obviously there, you know, that there can be a multitude of nuances to that, if you, if you will, but how would you manage balancing, you know, serving on the city planning and zoning and the town's planning and zoning? And do you feel as, as if that, you know, you can say that you would not be faced with any form of conflict?
I, I don't believe there's a conflict and correct me if I'm wrong. Oh, quick, quick correction, you did another Freudian slip, I'd be a town commissioner and a city commissioner. Yes, so that being said, the city, I believe their entire zoning is held within the city. And then the town zoning doesn't apply to the city. So my understanding is they wouldn't overlap and actually I gave a call over to Town Manager John Burke to have him double check and make sure I could serve on both before I even submitted the application. And I texted him again after that, I texted or called or emailed, I forget, to say, hey, let's make sure, and so he did, he double checked again. So I, my understanding is there wouldn't be, but if there was, obviously I would I'd take the guidance from the town and city staff, which one do I need to vote on, which one do I need to recuse myself on? And anything like that, I mean, I would make very sure that I'm not violating any I want to call them morals, but it's not morals, like laws or I, I don't know how to say the word.
All right.
If that makes sense.
And I see Clark McCauser's hand is raised.
I just, I'll just put the words in your mouth, Conrad, you don't want to, don't want to violate any ethical
Exactly.
conflicts and I did send a, a town attorney opinion. This, you know, this has been raised over and over again about dual offices and so forth over the years, but the best written one I sent out and the political subdivision, that's what the city is, it's a political subdivision, just like no ex zoning, just like Groton, Long Point, or the fire districts, those are all political subdivisions and you can be a member of a political subdivision board that makes decisions. It's no violation if you serve on a town one, in addition. There's all the, there's other stipulations and statute regarding state representatives serving as town officials. That's not a violation either.
Yeah, I would just add, I think I may have talked to Betsy about that as well, but a while back, so thank you, Betsy.
Thank you, and obviously there are a lot of items that you either voted on or took action on as a member of the town council, including the Mystic Oral School in particular, and my, my question to Councilor Heath is should any application for the Mystic Oral School come before Planning and Zoning Commission, should you serve as a, an alternate member with voting powers at that meeting? Would you, would you recuse yourself from that vote?
Well, that's, it's an interesting question, so and I think it's also very real. So a good question to ask. I don't know that I would need to recuse myself from that vote, but I have no vested interest in whether Mystic Oral School moves forward as it was originally proposed, I would assume that the proposal has changed. I, to be honest, have not followed anything that's been on planning and zoning since I was off the council. But whatever the original proposal was, I know that that's dead. So I don't know if I would need to recuse myself, but if that was the advice I was, I received, then I would, I would definitely do it.
And to your knowledge, have you posted or not, or opined on any written communication regarding items before the Planning and Zoning Commission currently, such as data centers? Such as, or any other hot item, if you will?
Um, so the data center is an interesting thing, I may have commented on social media with that. But if there's, there's a proposal, for example, up in, I think it's Wellington, Connecticut, where there's a big truck stop that they want to put in a transfer station, they want to clear like a hundred and seventy-seven acres of land. And initially I was in favor of the idea of the data center because you would take a very small piece of land, develop it and then the rest of the land would remain treed and I, as I understood, it would probably be donated back to the town, but I, I didn't follow it, so I don't know any details and I don't believe any proposal was ever actually presented, but I can't be sure, because I apologize, I haven't followed town meetings, I haven't really commented much since, you know, last, last November. But I, I was in favor of the idea, because I think we need to start getting creative in order to protect our open space. I would hate to see a big tract of land be, be bulldozed, personally speaking. So how else do you have property, you, you respect the property rights without I don't know, selling the town short, if that makes sense. So I may have commented once or twice, but not on any actual proposal, just that I thought we should consider it and look at the details before saying no, that's all.
All right. Well, I, I have no other questions. Do any other counselors have questions for Counselor, for, for Mr. Heath?
No, thanks.
Councilor Westerville, any questions?
Well, I just, I'm just curious, I know that we're kind of under a time crunch here and I'm hoping that since this is not mission critical, that we move forward today, I would like to say again.
And I, I don't, I don't mean to cut you off, Councilor Westerville, I, I do not feel comfortable moving forward with with any votes for, for planning and zoning tonight, until we have our interviews and do, give it our due diligence, so don't, we're not under the crunch for a vote per se.
Oh, no, right.
But I do want to move on a couple items quickly before I know where we do have a six fifteen stop. So with that said, thank you, Mr. Heath, our, our time is, is over and thank you for taking the time to speak with our committee tonight, it must be appreciated.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate it, you all have a great day.
Mr. Chairman, I just want, you know, there were requests from the Community Development Advisory Commission to do some switcherooies, it's not that difficult, Meredith Key to be a full position and then Dana Simarero as an alternate and, and moving Mr. Russell up as a, as a full position, because she, she got an all of a sudden resignation also.
Okay, yeah, let's take care of that real quick. All right.
And don't be confused between Dane and Dana, they're two different people. Dane was for Groton Housing Authority and Dana Simarero is for CDEC.
Okay, so I'll, I'll make a motion to appoint Dana Simarero of two oh two High Street to the Community Development Advisory Committee as an alternate.
McBride will second that.
Moved by Bumgarner, seconded by McBride?
Yes.
Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed, extension motion carries unanimously three zero zero. I will make a motion to move up Mr. Russell Spalding to, from alternate to full-time voting member, what's the term? Sorry, I don't have a paper form, I think it must be, it's just an email, correct?
Yes, it was an email, not, not the actual form.
Okay, uh, all right, I got it here. It, it's titled memo for multiple CDEC, right? Okay, I, I got it, I got it, Betsy. I'll make a motion to appoint Russell Spalding, unaffiliated, as a full-time voting member to the Community Development Advisory Committee with the term expiring two seven twenty, two thousand twenty-five.
Second, Westerville.
Moved by Bumgarner, seconded by Westerville. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension motion carries unanimously three zero zero. Next, I'll make a, entertain, well, I will make the motion to move up Meredith Key of one twenty-three Ledgewood Road with a term expiring two seven, two twenty-two four to the Community Development Advisory Committee.
McBride will second that.
All right, moved by Bumgarner, seconded by McBride, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension motion carries unanimously three zero zero. And with that but with the exception of, of the reappointment, correct?
You've got a reappointment of Margie Gukins also.
And that's it?
Yep. Proceed, yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Margie Gukin to the Community Development Advisory Committee.
Second, Westerville.
Moved by Bumgarner, seconded by Westerville, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed, extension motion carries unanimously three zero zero. Next, I see we have Mr. Freeman here for, for the retirement board.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Freeman, thank you for taking the time to speak with us this evening. I don't have any questions for you unless other members have questions for you.
I do not.
Do you, McRae? All right, with that said, I will make a motion to appoint Michael Freeman of twenty-two Merrill Court, Groton, to the retirement board with the term expiring twelve thirty-one twenty-four.
McBride will second.
Moved by Bumgarner, seconded by McBride, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, extension motion carries unanimously three zero zero. I will make a motion to appoint Mr. John Burbank of eleven Ridgewood Road of Groton, Long Point to the retirement board with the term expiring twelve thirty-one twenty-four.
Second, Westerville.
Moved by Bumgarner, seconded by Westerville, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, extension motion carries unanimously three zero zero. All right, we're going to pivot back to interviews, Mr. McDermott, do we have you on the line? Mr. McDermott?
I could try calling.
Okay, if there's nothing further, I, I think we're good with our I know we have a few items, but
Well, you do have another committee that needs reappointment, that's the Fairwood Commission, you have a memo from July eighteenth that Robert Devoe had sent in for himself.
McDermott's got his hand up.
There you go. He's, he, he can talk, he's, he's, he can talk.
Yes, can you hear, can you hear us, Mr. McDermott?
Maybe you need to turn your computer speaker up, Mr. McDermott.
Right. We got a hard stop and, you know, we do, we had a hard stop at six fifteen, so with that said, you know, as I explained as a committee, we do our work as a committee, we don't leave anybody behind. We got a lot of, of work done this evening and so what I will ask of Mr. McDermott is that we, I would like to give him the opportunity to come before our committee, I know he's having audio issues, so let's, let's make it a priority for our next meeting on first item, we'll have Mr. McDermott on for an interview.
And the reappointments for Fairwood, you'll do that then too?
Yes, we'll, we'll take care of that at our next meeting, all outstanding business. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
McBride will make the motion.
Second, Westerville.
With that, motion is seconded. All those in favor for adjournment, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension, motion carries unanimously, three zero zero. Thank you, gentlemen, as always. Thank you, Mr. Kirk McCauser.